I want to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. Sheriff, would you mind? Thank you. Again, I want to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. Would like to make an announcement and want to remind everyone of the Peace Officers Memorial this week, Thursday at noon, is that right, Sheriff? Chief, over here at the courthouse. So if you're in town, available, please come be a part of it. Well, if I quit making noise. Again, welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. Before we get started, we want to have our invocation. I'll lead with that. Mr. Givens is available to be here with us today. And Commissioner McCam, if you would, the pledges.
Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us, Lord. Our freedom, our comfort, our nourishment, Lord. We're blessed in so many ways that we take so much for granted. Father, we pray for those that are less fortunate. We pray for those that need healing. Father, we ask that you do these things and that you also be with this court. You be with its members to do the better good, to do your will, Father. And of course, with this day, this week being law enforcement, appreciation, we, Father, please be with all law enforcement and all of those who are our first responders that we rely upon, to be there when we need them most. Father, we thank you for them. And Father, we give you the praise for all of our blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Well, the time is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting Commissioners' Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item one is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court held on May the 10th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing now, Judge, I move we approve the registration of Commissioners' Court on May the 10th, 2022 as presented.
I second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the Commissioners' Court's minutes as presented for May the 10th, 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on canvas of the votes of the May 7th, 2022 constitutional amendment election. We have our elections administrator with us, ma'am?
Yes, I'm here today to forward the canvas of the votes for the May 7th constitutional amendments. We had 31 precincts, which typically we have 30, but we had the Brownsboro in there with the joint, so we had to create a different one just to line that out. And then we had 4,075 people turn out, and it's 7% of the population turned out to vote. So the results are, I think both amendments passed countywide and statewide.
Okay. Questions, Court?
Did everything run smoothly?
Everything did go pretty smoothly. And we're doing it again.
So the ones of the cities that are having the runoffs, does our inter-local still?
So one city does have to have a runoff, it's Gunborough City. I've been in contact with the state and Gunborough. What we're going to do is a service agreement, because if we run the whole, do an inter-local agreement and run the whole election for them, we have to have Athens open for voting. And I had four Gunborough voters vote here, so I think, and they have to pay for the whole thing. So to save them some money, they're going to run it. I'm going to be there for technical support and equipment. So I think we got it all worked out. They had a meeting last night. They, I think they ordered it for June 28th. So we'll facilitate and help them what we can.
They, their election for June 28th?
Yes, I believe they ordered it last night. I haven't talked to them this morning, but that, it was, they had a council meeting last night.
I think it's tonight. Had a special last night.
Okay, they probably canvassed last night, and they have the order.
Okay.
But we're looking at June 28th.
All right.
And we'll help them.
Any other questions or comments? One thing I would like to bring out, with our 31 precincts, there are 73 ballot styles?
Yes, so if you can imagine circles on top of circles, it wasn't, if you, we had TBCC in the middle of Maybank ISD, in the middle of, may, City of Maybank, so when all those circles overlap, we have to create a new ballot style. So, yeah, it was real tricky over by the lake, so.
Well, what I'm getting at is that if we were still in a manual setting where we're having to print ballots, we would have to
Oh, yeah.
...print 73 different types of ballots just for this
And everybody would have to go to their precinct, because it wouldn't, there wouldn't be feasible to do countywide, but, yeah.
Yeah. It's amazing going from fill in the bubble, simple, to what we have now with all the different entities that are now involved in holding elections.
I mean, the entities like having us help with the elections.
I'm sure so.
They, they enjoy that. It works out pretty well, so.
Any other comments from the Court?
I find it difficult to understand that everybody has something to gripe about nowadays, especially if it has to do with anything that the government is doing. But we got 57,767 registered voters and 4,000 of them voted. 7%. That's enough, see?
Many people take the process for granted. So, I'm really surprised at that turnout being as large as it was, to be honest with you, being that the time that it was set at. All right, any other comments? Entertainer motion?
I move that we make the motion to canvass the votes for the May 7th, 2022 constitutional amendment special election.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the canvas of the votes for the May 7th, 2022 constitutional amendment special election. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Father, thank you. Item three is consider and take action on accepting the fiscal year 2022 indigent defense grant program award. Ms. Brown?
Yes, good morning. I bring before the Court today our award for the 22 indigent defense grant program. The county has been awarded $65,514.
Okay. Court, comments, questions? This program? Oh, go ahead. No, please.
What does that program cost us?
So, we report on the previous year expenditures and
Percentage is just a little bit over of a voter turnout, so my percentage.
One thing that Ms. Brown did not bring in, there are other attorney, and defense expenses. This is just one category of defense expenditures. This is, this does not include the CPS or any of those, which takes the grand total up to 1.3 million, I believe?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
It's ranged right in there, 1.2, 1.3, for a number of years now. But this is just one segment. And of course, this came about, and I can't remember the bill that passed in 2001, 2002, that created this program, where this funding was actually not to cover the expenses for the defense, but to cover the expenses for a coordinator. And that has struggled to keep up with that cost over the years. But it is a part of our constitutional responsibility as far as being sure individuals have adequate defense. But it is a lot of money. So, any other comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll take it.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to accept the 2022 indigent defense grant program award. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four is consider and take action to apply for the Edwin A. Blue and Janice Owen Miller charitable fund grant application for fiscal year 2022. Ms. Brown?
Yes, so this funding is for, being requested by the Historical Commission. They've requested to apply for the funding to assist with purchasing, or not assist, but to purchase a laptop, two scanners, and an external hard drive. Having this equipment will assist in allowing them to scan different documents such as historical documents, yearbooks, pictures, and it'll allow them to convert it to a media format that can be easy, easily stored.
Court, questions, comments?
Yeah, I was looking at the way they do it. Normally, they just put it on a flat surface scanner, and have to turn each page and pick the book up and do it. And they demonstrated to us how this works, and you lay the book flat, and it actually has a search criteria in it, where you can put one word in or a name, and it'll go back and locate anything that's in the book, it's kind of like doing Ctrl F on your computer, and it'll search for what you're looking for, and anything's been scanned.
Is there any matching, or is this 100% funding?
It's 100% funding. They've awarded.
Okay. Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the application for the Edwin A. Blue and Janice Owen Miller charitable fund grant application for 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Now, item number five is consider and take action on a list of eligible projects for the American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds and proceed with necessary project implementation. Ms. Brown?
Yes, so this is the next step in working through the funding for the state and local fiscal recovery funds. We are bringing, or I'm bringing a resolution to y'all, to, for the Court to sign and approve our projects, potential projects for the funding.
Court, questions? There is a list of eight here of types. These are not individual named projects, these are types of projects, is that correct?
Yes.
I think that we have, in our meetings, that we have really, as the Court have looked across of what has happened over the last 18 months to two years, and that our citizens are going to be able to see, see stuff that we're taking with this that hopefully save the ice storm, that we don't get in that problem again. Law enforcement, the senior citizens building in the fairgrounds. So I think that we've, they're going to be able to see some of this money that the Court was, or, excuse me, that the county was given, and they're going to be able to touch it. It's not going to be behind the scenes. So I'm, I'm kind of proud of the Court of how we've stretched all these eight across our, across our county, that everybody should be able to see.
We do have individuals with Trailer and Associates, who is the grant management firm that the county went under contract with, to help us ensure that this process goes smoothly and do not run into any of those disallowed costs that we're so fond of speaking about from time to time. The eight areas here, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Brown, for the public, would you name off those eight for the public, please?
Yes, sir. So the projects are the UT Health COVID-19 related expenditures, water supply, broadband infrastructure, law enforcement equipment, HVAC air quality, road infrastructure, senior citizens building, fairgrounds complex, as one item, and financial software.
And I would ask, and gentlemen, if you would, with Trailer and Associates, all of these fit, if you would, please come forward. All of these are in compliance with the interim rule, the final rule, all of the wonderful things in the federal government's handbook, we're meeting those criteria.
That's correct, Judge. After several months of workshops with the county, I know that we've gone through a long list of items, potential items, for the Court to discuss and take action on concerning American Rescue Plan Act funds. We've looked through all these certain items, gone through with our internal team at Trailer and Associates, just to make sure we do fit that eligibility factor and that we are in compliance with all this research that we've done and list of items that we have before the Court. We do feel very comfortable at this time with the, with the list that the Court has. This is not an all-inclusive list that the Court has, this is just a list of items at this time. So I want to make sure that that is realized, that you're not put into a corner right now at all with this, it's just the items that we've come up with so far, and this is not all inclusive. Any questions?
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to say thank you to Trailer and Associates for going through this process with us. It was a pretty good sum of money. When you start looking at some of these projects, it goes away pretty quick. But I think we had a few of the projects that we were, when we came into the workshops, that we really wanted to focus on, and I think water supply and having a constant steady source of water during all times and all situations was one of our main concerns. Broadband infrastructure, being able to get that, that last mile, or try to start working on getting that last mile. The senior citizens building at the fairgrounds, we found out during COVID, it works great out there, but there are some improvements that need to be made to run the, the number of people that we run. And, and then the road infrastructure, which is a major concern with moving vehicles up and, up and down the roads throughout the county. So I think we hit those four and, and made sure that we had those in there, and then added some, and then, like Trailer and Associates said, we, there are some other items that might be added also, but these were our main focus and concerns.
Well, and this resolution is not the ending. Actually, this is our second step of official actions that have joined with about four or five previous workshops. So we have quite a bit more work to do in this process. This is not, we're not done with this step here.
That's correct.
Yeah. Just so that the public understands, it's not a one, two, and done. This is a multi-year process that will continue, well, until 2026, so.
Hope to get it done before then.
Yeah, I hope so. Lots of workshops. Any other comments, Court? Anything further? Court, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the eligible, or the list of eligible projects for the American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds and proceed with necessary project implementation. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Located in Precinct 3. Commissioner McCam?
Yes, this is a petition that has been brought forth by, for Service District, ESD number 12. They have all the paperwork and petitions filled out and signed. They have the field notes. We have several representatives from Chandler Fire Department, which will be the main fire department in this ESD. Would any of y'all like to speak on this? But it's something we've done 11 other times. So I wish back in the beginning, we would have started East and West ESD or something, but this is the way it works now. It's essential for these fire departments, I think. I don't know if any of them with the rules, regulations, and the equipment they have to have, and the training they have to have, and the uniforms they have to have, and I don't know how any of them make it, you know, selling barbecue sandwiches on Saturday. So I think this is a necessary movement for the ESD number 12. And like I said, we do have some members of that area here, but if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Court? Well, I would like to add that you are correct, Commissioner. This is a process that I wished a number of years ago that we would have taken a different approach with due to the administrative replication that takes place. And when you consider there's five appointees per each ESD, there are very few counties in the state that have as many ESDs as Henderson County does. As you've mentioned, most of them, you know, have two to four. But we're here and we're now with how we've done that, and it's been allowed to begin at the local level, very local level, of those fire departments wishing to undertake that in those communities. So the petition checks out certification? Ms. Lucky? Yes. Okay. And we have the meets and bounds here, the meets and bounds. We have a proposed map on accepting this application.
And that proposed map, while you was talking about it, it, it pretty well fills, well, it fills all the areas inside the Chandler Northern End of Lake Palestine area, and even those areas that wasn't, wasn't taken up by ESD 6 and ESD 5, there were some islands in there, and this, this took all those areas in. So there is, there's no areas left, you know, out without being in an ESD in between 6, 5, and 12 now.
It goes all the way to county line to the north.
Yes, it goes to county line, county line all the way to the north.
Any other comments?
And if we approve this, so then it goes to the voters? Or, I didn't mean to make a joke.
No, I'm sorry. The, upon accepting of the application, of course, the next item is setting a public hearing, so that the community in the area affected can have an opportunity to come and speak and to let their opinions known about if they believe that this is a viable option or not. And then, once the public hearing is held, then the Court can move forward with the calling for the election. And we have, we have some hard deadlines we're up against on those two, is that correct, Ms. Lucky?
Yes, that's correct. We have to order it coming in on this, to have it on the ballot for the members.
Any other questions or comments?
If not, I move to accept a petition for creation of Emergency Service District number 12 located in Precinct 3.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to accept a petition for the creation of Emergency Service District number 12 located in Precinct 3. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item seven is consider and take action to set a public hearing for the creation of Emergency Service District located in Precinct 3. Now, there's a set amount of time that we have to set out for that. Is that 14 days or 21 days in this instance, or is it 30?
It's 21 days.
It's 21 days. Okay. Statistically, we're required to do a 21-day setting to give the public enough time. Of course, these maps will be made available, Commissioners' precincts, and here at the annex, for anyone wishing to, to see them.
So what are we looking at, the 7th? That'd be 21 days?
Yes, sir. One, two, yes, sir, be June 7th.
I move that we set a public hearing on June the 7th at 9:20 a.m.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to set a public hearing for the creation of Emergency Service District number 12 located in Precinct 3 for Ju, June 7th at 9:20 a.m. Any other comments?
Yeah, did I, did you say we weren't going to meet on that? I thought you said you had something to do on that first Tuesday of June.
No, sir.
In the budget?
No, sir.
Or the workshop.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. No, we will not. We will not be meeting the first Tuesday of July due to the Fourth of July holiday.
Yeah, I knew that. Thank you.
Item number eight, consider and take action on floodplain permit number TRWD CCL-1 located in Zone A locations and crossing Cedar Creek north of State Highway Thirty-One for Tarrant Regional Water District. Ms. Kimbrough?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We're here this morning on the first of two floodplain permit applications. And the first one, the location is in Precinct One. It's for the Cedar Creek Lake project. It is actually tunneling under Cedar Creek, crossing several floodplain locations. I have with me today members from City of Malaco, from Tarrant Regional Water District, and I'll ask each person to introduce themselves for the record. Weston?
If you would please come forward where you can be heard.
Well, I'm Weston Beck with the City of Malaco. I'm the Director of Public Works and currently the Interment Administrator.
And Weston's here because a very small portion of this permit covers areas inside of the city limits of Malaco, and they're in total agreement for the county to sign off on the permit on their behalf. So that's why we arranged it that way. The Commissioners were in agreement as well.
Okay.
So, and then Ed?
Good morning. My name's Ted Weaver, Tarrant Regional Water District, and right now I'm acting as the Integrated Pipeline Program Manager.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Shelley Hatton. I'm with TRWD. I'm a resident engineer.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Charles Cameron. I'll be the Construction Manager for this portion of the IPR project.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Josh Bunting. I'm with Tractor Sun for the Contractor Own Project.
Thank y'all so very much.
The last two are definitely ones we want to get to know real well.
Yes, they will be. And let me start out before we go any further with the actual permit. I was asked to coordinate a meeting with the team, the contractors, and the Commissioners and City of Malaco regarding certain future endeavors. It don't really involve these two permits that included the road permit usage agreement, the full policy, as well as the utility easement agreement. And I believe that full policy covered all of the road bond information, the crossing information, and those things. So those were all discussed as asked. They're not really a part of this permit, either of these two permits today, but Tarrant Regional understands that those things are future.
They're very much interrelated.
They're very much interrelated, but not on these particular projects. So I'll move forward. The packets that you received, the application, actually is for both locations due to the extensive work that goes into putting together a permits like this. I do have the pre-fotos. I do have CFR Four Four Regulations, Permit Regulations, and I believe all of the other documents that the contractors have to provide as far as their safety plan, taking the responsibility off the county for any site incidents. And I believe Commissioner Spivey has some questions as well. In your packet, you have colored photos of the entire route, and then you have a colored photo of each site location. And the site location that we're talking about right now is the Cedar Creek location. The documents behind those two projects, well, actually, the first one's Hollywood Lake, but the second one is Cedar Creek. So the documents behind those maps, those maps are actually the engineering studies that back up what they're doing. So this is a lot more detailed than what normally our permits would be, but it's a lot bigger project. This actually is for an eighty-four-inch pipeline that will be tunneled for the most part, and there will be crossing locations to get to that. And I'll let Commissioner Spivey, I know Commissioner Spivey has a question.
Well, I was just wanting to tell the public that I've been on board with TRWD's project since they started for many, for many years, and they've always gone above and beyond to keep us informed of their meetings every week and what's going on, and they've been great. And I just wanted to tell them thank you for trying to do the right thing. And just for the public's, for comment, I just wanted to ask a question. Were there any structures or private properties that will be affected by this, the tunneling and the permit? Just to keep it up for the public.
Okay, so we'll record Ed Weaver's answer as a note to that. So for this, for this project.
And for Joy, are you comfortable with moving forward with this permit?
I'm comfortable moving forward. We've done a lot of work. It's been probably this phase of the project has been, I would say, eight or nine months in the working. They do have monthly meetings that the Commissioners and I are invited to if we would like to attend by video. Sometimes we do, sometimes.
They have weekly meetings also.
Right. So they have their own engineering meetings. We've really tried to cover all the phases as much as possible. So I am comfortable with the application, CCL One is what I call it. Each of the backup documents will be taken apart, and each permit will be filed with each set of backup documents. And these documents remain in my office for anybody that wants to look at their.
Court, questions or comments concerning this first?
Assistant Justice Charlie or Ed wanted to also give a statement on how this process works, like how deep this bore is, how long the bore is, and how many foot they go day, just so the public knows what the, what kind of project this is. A lot of people don't understand what, how extreme this bore is under the road, or under the...
Thank you so much.
Under the situation that it's not just a little simple road bore like we normally see.
Okay. Please come forward, Court.
I've been under the Trinity River and get to see, got to see the work that was going on, and it's pretty amazing.
This part of the, this part of the program is about forty, forty-two miles of pipe from Lake Palestine over to Cedar Creek where we interconnect to the other part of the line that we've already had been serviced in Cedar Creek. Along this route, there were, for environmental reasons, four of these are for environment, four of these are for environmental reasons. One is a school district safety issue over at Frankston where we're tunneling by the, by the school. But here at Cedar Creek and Hollywood Lake where these floodplain permits are, has to do with environmental areas, that type of thing where we're tunneling. So these tunnels at Hollywood Lake and Cedar Creek are roughly six thousand feet, fifty-five hundred, six thousand feet, will be about, what, a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet deep as far as where we're passing. So we will, in that regard, right now, the tonne bore machine is being manufactured. It'll be probably about a year before we start the actual tunneling. But in the meantime, we're digging the portals and the shafts to be able to launch the TBM when it gets here. So what that does, it allows us to avoid a lot of surface issues. But some of these, some of these streams and creeks are environmental, and we, so we can't disturb the surface. We've done all the investigation as far as the historical, cultural, environmental issues, things like that. We have some eagles' nests that we're dealing with that were on some of the open cuts that we're limiting the contractor on time of year that they can work close to the eagle's nest when they're on the nest, that type of thing. So we're, that's a really high level of what the project is. Now, these tunnels, there's five tunnels here in this project. We have the intake over Palestine that will be going to bid next year sometime roughly March, April of next year. And then we have a couple of open cut pipe. So this is, excuse me, we're looking at having this part of the system operational by 2027 for Dallas. Dallas is doing their, their part of the work on getting, getting connected from the Integrated Pipeline up to their treatment plant, which they're taking to the bottom treatment plant. For reference, that's, if everybody knows what Love Field is, that's on the north end of the runway of Love Field. So that's, is there, is that kind of what you, what you want? So any questions? Court?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. So I get to know all of that without having to talk about it, thank goodness. So I'd like to submit to the court. Our, the permit actually includes our specific description provided by the company. It's open land. It defines what the name of the project is to Tarrant Regional. It also describes this as an other project. It's the, it's the bore sets of the project. It also is non-residential. It's also new construction. It's an eighty-four-inch rock pipeline ultimately is what this part is for. And there is a acknowledgement statement, a warning statement that Tarrant Regional will acknowledge by their signatures today if the court approves this permit. And this part will be the same for both permits. So this is a floodplain development permit issued at the county level. The flood hazard boundary maps and other data used by Henderson County, Texas Floodplain Administrator in evaluating flood hazards to proposed developments are considered reasonable and accurate for regulatory purposes and are best, based on the best available scientific and engineering data. On rare occasions, greater floods can and will occur, and flood heights may be increased by man-made or natural causes. Issuance of an exemption certificate does not imply that developments outside the identified areas of special flood hazards will be from flooding or flood damage. Issuance of an exemption certificate shall not create liability on the part of Henderson County, Texas, the Henderson County, Texas Floodplain Administrator or any officer or employee or elected official of Henderson County, Texas in the event that flooding or flood damage does occur. The contractor or work crew will be responsible for all safety plans for workers, contractors, and other employees. In the event emergency assistance is needed in Henderson County, Texas, first responders, nine-one-one will be the appropriate twenty-four hour call number. All weather-related dangers will be monitored by the site crew or assignees other than county offices.
Okay.
So that's the, for both permits.
Yes, ma'am. Court, any other discussion concerning the first permit, TRWD CC eleven-one?
They are good for one year and...
These are good for one year. They will be renewed in the eleventh month, provided there's an extension that's needed. And that can be renewed for one year in the eleventh month without coming back to board, provided there's no significant changes. And that's been, we talked about that in the workshop also.
Okay. Any further comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the floodplain permit, TRWD CCL-1 located in several Zone A locations and crossing Cedar Creek north of State Highway Thirty-One for Tarrant Regional Water District located in Precinct One.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the floodplain permit, TRWD CCL-1 located in Zone A locations and crossing Cedar Creek. North State Highway Thirty-One for the Tarrant Regional Water District and located in Precinct One. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number nine is consider and take action on floodplain permit, TRWD HLWD-1 located between FM Fifty-Nine and FM Seven-Fifty-Three, crossing Hollywood Lake for Tarrant Regional Water District. And this particular permit is exactly the same?
Exactly the same. No differences. Same supporting documentation, same application packet, and I would turn it over to Commissioner Prentice.
Commissioner, this being in, locate, this portion being located in Precinct Four?
Yes, Court. They're on a, their first shaft, I think, is going to be there right at FM Fifty-Nine, and it'll cross from there all the way to Seven-Fifty-Three. It'll be born under Hollywood Lake, which is directly under the lake, the water body. And it'll be off Seven-Fifty-Three, and there'll be no county roads affected by this permit or anything. It'll all be state highways.
Okay. Questions or comments concerning the second floodplain permit?
And that bore is approximately about the same distance, about six thousand foot. So basically about the same distance on the bore.
That's really quite a feat. You're talking, total, both of them's two miles of boring a hundred feet deep.
And y'all move at a pace of about fifty foot a day on those? I think around fifty foot per day.
About fifty foot, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there anything at all, last chance? Nothing as far as difference in the two permits?
No difference in the two permits other than the locations, no liability, and the panels.
And the panels. Court, if there's no further discussion, will entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve floodplain permit, TRWD HLWD-1 for Tarrant Regional Water District.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the floodplain permit, TRWD HLWD-1 located between Highway FM Fifty-Nine and Seven, and FM Seven-Fifty-Three, crossing Hollywood Lake for Tarrant County Regional Water District. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May we be excused, Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item ten is receive financial reports. There are none to receive this week. Item eleven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. Ms. Harris?
Good morning. I have biweekly ten payroll totals.
Court, questions?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move to accept payroll to spark a total for BW Number Ten.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to accept and approve the payroll disbursements for biweekly Number Ten as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
And then I also have the April of Twenty-Two accounts cash sheet.
Questions for Ms. Harris? I would say, one, it appears that we have taken and moving money into text pool?
Yes, we have.
By looking at this, that is now rolling in as a part of the process. Fantastic.
Yes, we have moved the, moved the part of money into the text pool, and then we have started for the road bridge also.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the accounts cash sheet for a period ending of April 2022 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item twelve is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and we do have one today. Ms. Lee, or who wishes to speak about it?
Well, this is a contract for the credit card processor, right in the work.
Okay. This is, last week, Court, if you'll remember, we approved in agreement to get to the second part of this. This is the bank involved using the, in the credit card vendor. And this is a part of the process. The county attorney has reviewed it. You see the listed fees that are here in this process.
You see the listed fees that are here in this process. We are somewhat captive to this process, given the fact of the software requirements. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Hearing no questions, entertain a motion with judge's authorization to sign?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the merchant, merchant processing agreement, application, and fee schedule with Merritt Bank with the county judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 13 is consider and take action on a request for right-of-way permits.
I have one at Precinct 1.
At where?
Precinct 1. Yes, court, Encore is needing a right-of-way permit to put some new lines from Malakoff to Willis Springs in Precinct 1, and this is just the formality that we do.
Okay. I see we have Mr. Tremble Willis with Encore. Come on up, Tom. Quite a bit of construction here, looking from the process.
This is a part of that whole deal down at Crossroads where we're trying to increase reliability down there. Create a dual, actually a backup feed that goes down there. There's several projects we looked at, and this is one of them, coming out of Willis
During the winter storm of 2021, there was quite a bit of issues in that area.
Yes.
And that was very much identified then, and I knew that Encore and Trinity Valley worked very hard down there trying to, to correct issues. And this is a large step in doing that, correct?
First thing we did is we trimmed a lot of trees down there. And that this is a secondary, and this is a huge step in increasing reliability down there.
Does it involve that substation?
Yes.
It does.
Yes.
That's an older substation needing of upgrading?
Well, it would, it'll come out in that substation.
Come out of that.
So it's not gonna be upgraded or anything. We're just bringing a new feed out of it.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Court, any other comments? Commissioner?
Hearing none, I'd like to make the motion to approve the right-of-way permit between Henderson County and Encore for putting in utility lines down the county road 1200 and 1201, located in Precinct 1 with commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the propose, the notice of proposed utility line agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Company for utility line upgrades on county road 1200 and 1201 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Tremble.
Thank you.
Item 14 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, of which we have none. And then item 15 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, we have two sets. Our first set is April sales tax in the amount of $2,207.43.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
I'd like to motion with by the April sales tax.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the April sales tax bills in the amount of $2,207.43, 43 cents as presented. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Sorry, fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $294,348.96.
Mr. Spivey, questions?
I did have a couple of questions, but she answered them before court.
Commissioner Tulley?
Right, ma'am.
Commissioner McCam?
Right.
Mr. Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills as presented in the amount of $294,348.96.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $294,348.96. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 16 is consider and take action on submitted plats?
No.
No plats. Item 17 is open and consider bids, which we have none. And then item 18 is to convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551.074 regarding personnel matters, namely, review and discussion of applicants for the county veteran service officer position. Uh, who, court, the time currently is 9:53. Would you like to, 10 o'clock, or how would you like to move forward to that gentleman if you don't mind?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to convene into executive session at 10 o'clock. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. We'll be in recess until 10. Sorry.